All right, let's get started. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District. This is the Judiciary Committee. We are here today for Council Bill 20-0223R, approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license for use at 3607 Fleet Street to a Class A7 license for use at 5601 Eastern Avenue, also known as 5701A Fleet Street. I'd like to recognize Vice Chair Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, Vice Chair Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. I apologize for not seeing your title, Madam Vice Chair. Councilman Ed Risinger, 10th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Leon Pigott, 7th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Zieg Cohen, 1st District. Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District. We are also joined by Matt Stegman, representing Mayor Jack Young. And we have Dominic McIlholy, representing Council President Brandon Scott. Before we get started, I'm going to turn it over to the bill sponsor, Councilman Cohen, for very brief introductory remarks. Councilman Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to members of the committee, as well as all the staff. So, the resolution, the request, is to transfer a license for a package store into a new development, which is Yard 56th. It's the former PEMCO site, the Bayview neighborhood. This is a mixed-use project. It's been in development now for a little over a year, and a few of the businesses are starting to open up. We are really, really excited about this development. It represents some real investment in a neighborhood that, you know, hasn't seen a ton of investment. So, the request is to transfer the license. It's an A7 license. And it would go from the original site, which is 3607 Fleet Street, to the new location at 5601 Eastern Avenue. I respectfully request the support of the committee and my colleagues to make this happen and support what I think is a really exciting development in southeast Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. I know that we have Councilwoman Shannon Snead from 13th District on the phone. And I know that Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District is having some technical issues, but will be joining us momentarily. With that, I want to jump over to the Liquor Board. We have Deputy Executive Secretary Tom Akris on the line. Tom, you have the bill report for this. I believe it's favorable. Do you stand by your report?
Mr. Chair, Thomas Akris, Deputy Executive Secretary, Liquor Board, Baltimore City. I do stand by the report. The bill allows for this license to convert from a Class BD7 to an A7 license. That is the council resolution that's required by Alcoholic Beverages Article 12902.1. So, once this license is transferred and is approved by the Board of Liquor License Commissioners, this resolution would allow them to then request the BD7 license to be converted to a Class A7 license, which would be a packaged goods license from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Tom. Before we go on to the Law Department, Matt, I sent you PDF of amendments that have been offered up by the operator who, Councilman Cohen, introduced this bill on behalf of. Only technical amendments. They basically are a slight change in the address. But, Matt, if you could please send those out to committee members, if you have not already. Again, committee members, this is just a technical change here. Want to be clear on that. Let me go over to Department of Law now. Hillary and Victor, I don't know who's running point on this, but is this bill approved for legal sufficiency? Victor, you're on mute.
Sorry, we're good? This is Victor of the City Law Department. We are prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency as drafted. I haven't seen the amendments. They're just technical, and we're not taking away from the block face with the law requires, and we're going to be...
I'm going to post the amendments in the share screen function. Bear with me for one moment.
Mr. Chair, I can put them up right now, if you'd like.
I got it. You do it. Sounds good. My share screen button is not working. Thank you, Matt. Yeah, as you can see, it's just replacing 5701A Fleet Street with 517 Bayview Boulevard. No changes at all to the bill, just a correction of the address.
That sounds fine. Great. No problem.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, before we go into public testimony, are there any questions for Board of Liquor License Commissioners or Department of Law? I see Councilwoman... First, Matt, could you please remove the screen share? Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Clark, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask a question. So, basically, what's the difference in these two licenses? I guess I'm asking the sponsor. Is that you can't do packaged goods retail with BD7? Why? I just wondered why they changed from a BD7 to, I think it's an A7? What was the difference?
That's correct. And it's also, Councilwoman Clark, a whole new development. So, we did something similar a little while back for a transfer of a license in... It went from Harbor East to Harbor Point as that new development came online. So, this has, I think, been sort of the standard procedure as these new developments come on, is you've got to go through this resolution process. Law Department, does that sound right?
Well, actually, can I just... My question is, I'm sure that it's all fine. But my question is, if I was... Why would I want to take a BD7? What are the reasons? Take a BD7 and make it an A7? What do you get that way that you didn't have with the original license? Or is there anything?
Councilwoman, can we jump over to Tom Akris? Because he's on this. Tom, answer the Councilwoman's questions, please. Tom?
Well, let's not hold up the hearing. It was just an academic question. I kept wondering... I know what a BD7 is. It's you can do just about anything. But to go to an A7, your reason?
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Stegman from the mayor's office. Councilwoman Clark... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'd be recognized as a...
Yes, of course, of course.
Thank you. Madam Councilwoman, the basic difference, BD7 is a tavern license. I know you have a couple of these in your district, where you have the liquor store that has the tavern attached. You know, there have been problems, you know, different places in the city with some of these places where they have a tavern that is a tavern in name only. It's essentially a liquor store that is... Has very extremely permissive hours. There was a legislative change. Yeah, and there was a legislative change in Annapolis a couple of years ago to let some of these operators who didn't want to have to operate that tavern partly, did want to operate a packaged goods store to exchange those BD7 licenses for the A7. And I can follow up with you offline about what the differences are. But basically, the difference is, you know, they do not have to have that attached tavern.
They don't need the tavern. So...
Yeah, that's the essential difference. And it's a little more than that. But part of the legislative change in Annapolis required that anybody who wanted to exchange these licenses does have to come before the council and have a resolution for that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't usually get Liquor Board stuff at the Baltimore City Council. So, I just wanted to understand why we do, when we do. And thank you for the explanation.
Absolutely. And if, yeah, again, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to follow up with you offline.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We've now been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead from 13th District, from phone to video. And then we are still waiting on Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. We've also been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District. Matt, or colleagues, if there's no other questions for the agencies, let's jump into public testimony, seeing that there are no questions. Matt, can you start to open up the cell, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And just before I start, a reminder for everyone who's in the public, who's joined by computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you'd like to testify. If you would. And if you cannot find the raise hand function, you can use the chat or Q and A function to let me know. Thank you. And we'll go to the first person we have on the phone. You'll hear two beeps when I unmute you, so you can start your testimony or indicate that you do not wish to testify.
For those who are testifying, please state your name. And if you are representing someone, please state who you're representing. And before we get into public testimony, I just got an indication from Councilman John Bullock that he's online, although I'm not sure if he's using video. He may be... He's calling in. Councilman John Bullock is on the line. Councilman Bullock, if you could please send the cellphone number or whichever phone number that you're calling from through email, so that he is able to unmute you when it comes time to vote. Appreciate it. Matt, please proceed with public testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, unmuting the first caller now. Somebody would have just heard two beeps. If you can testify, if you would like to. No response. Next caller. No response. And... The next caller should have just heard two beeps.
Hello?
Yes.
Matt? This is Al Barry. Can you hear me?
Yes, Al, we can hear you. Go ahead, if you'd like to testify on the resolution.
Caroline Hecker is the one who drafted the bill, worked with the Liquor Board. And my background has been primarily with the original PUD approvals for this project, which many in the council may know is half-completed and nearing completion. And to answer and elaborate on the question from Councilwoman Clark, the operator of the liquor store does not want to operate a tavern. And so, we wanted to take advantage of this old tavern license that a previous developer down in Canton Crossing, I believe, went to the legislature and created this new form of Class A license. So, that if he's not interested in the tavern, he's just having carryout sales, we felt it was the right way to go, and we appreciate your support. I don't know where Caroline Hecker is on the call, but that's the sum of our... Caroline, you there? I'm sure I have to raise her hand.
She is on.
Yeah, she's on the phone. We'll get to her. Al, does that conclude your testimony?
Yeah, that concludes it. We appreciate it. The council would support it. Yard 56th is a great project for the city and looking forward to opening up this summer in part.
Matt, next one up.
That was the last caller. Would you like me to unmute Caroline Hecker? Add anything?
Yes, please. I think we have all the information we need. I think we have all the information we need. I'm not hearing anything different from our colleagues, but if there's something you want to add, feel free to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin, on behalf of the applicant. I'm happy to answer any further questions. I think we've covered sort of the waterfront here. But if there's anything else anyone is interested in, we're happy to answer.
I'm going to speak on behalf of the committee here and say that I think we're good. I don't see any of my colleagues disagreeing. Colleagues, there are four amendments at this time. Is there a motion to move the four amendments, which we put on screen in your inbox? I see a motion by Councilman Risinger and a second by Councilwoman Clark. We'll do roll call for the amendments. Costello is a yes. Clark?
Yes.
Bullock? Bullock?
Yeah.
Pinkett?
Yes.
Risinger?
Yes.
Snead?
Yes.
Stokes? I believe Stokes is absent. One more time, Stokes? Okay, the amendment's passed 6-0. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably? I see a motion by Councilman Ed Risinger and a second by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Roll call, Costello, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes. Bullock?
Yeah.
Pinkett?
Yes.
Risinger?
Yes.
Yes.
Stokes is absent. This bill passes 6-0 with one absence. This bill moves to its reader on Monday, May 18th, at 5:00 PM. This hearing is now in recess. We will start the next hearing. We are here for Council Bill 20-0522, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals repeal physically the environment. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I am... If everyone could please go on mute, if you're not speaking, exception of committee members, which I believe the only one on the phone is Councilman John Bullock. Again, I'm Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. We are joined by Councilman Leon Pigott, 7th District, Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman John Bullock, 9th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Ed Risinger, 10th District, Member of the Committee. And Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District. Councilman Christopher Burnett, 8th District. We are all joined by Matt Stegman, who is representing Mayor Jack Young. And we are joined by Dominic McIlholy, who is representing Council President Brandon Scott. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, for brief introductory remarks.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Yes, so this bill came up because I have a constituent who's unfortunately suffering with ALS, who's looking to do a one-story addition to his main floor so that he can, you know, live, stay living in his house and live on the main floor that would be accessible. And the timing just happened to coincide... Can you give me one second? The time... The timing just happens to coincide with, you know, the whole Corona situation. And so, therefore, he's been put on hold for months. And so, when inquiring with BMZA... When I'm with BMZA, it was... I found out that there was an old law that prohibited people from being able to have these hearings, you know, via Zoom or other web portals like we've been doing for the council meetings. And so, therefore, a lot of projects across the entire city are just halted in times of emergencies. And so, the intention here is that this is a temporary exemption, which, you know, could become more long-term in times of emergencies that would allow the board to do what most other city agencies are doing, and that is to meet virtually so that the business of the city can continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. We have committee reports. Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong. We have committee reports from City Solicitor, BMZA, and Planning Commission. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right, we will start with the Law Department. Law Department...
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department.
Hang on one second, Hillary. Assuming all procedural requirements are met. Law Department approves for form and legal sufficiency. Okay, go ahead, Hillary.
Yes, we stand by our report. We approve this text change.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next up, we have... Bear with me. Department of Planning, I'm pulling up your report, which isn't downloading for some reason. Eric Tiso, I'm assuming that's you. And, oh, bear with me for one second. Planning, the Planning Commission supports this bill. Go ahead, Eric, you're up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, the Planning Commission heard this bill in their meeting of May 7th. And they recommend its passage with one amendment. And I can go into the details if you would like, or I can defer to Mr. Baumgartner at BMZA. But we believe this is a necessary bill. The BMZA is the only agency that we are aware of that has this in-person requirement. They already missed three potential hearings. This will go a long way to get them back to moving business again. The one thing that we were curious about is we saw in Section 3 that there was a sunset date that was included. We don't know that provides any particular benefit. They should have a flexibility, just like us, the Planning Commission and other agencies going forward. So, we recommend an amendment to strike Section 3. With that, we recommend passage of the bill.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We're going to let... Now, we're going to go over to BMZA, Derek.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Madam Vice Chairman and committee members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. I'm certainly here to answer any questions that anyone might have. To clarify, just a couple of things very briefly. We are currently having hearings. We are doing so legally after consulting with the Law Department in terms of complying with zoning code as well as state law. What this bill does is clarify that the zoning code specifically does not expressly prohibit something like virtual hearings. We believe that we're currently operating under the law, but this amplifies or clarifies that the zoning code doesn't prohibit doing something like virtual hearings. The intent, as anyone who has moderated a virtual hearing can attest to, is not to keep doing these. They're not the easiest or the most pleasant way to have public hearings. As soon as we can resume normal operations, we absolutely will. A lot of this testimony is provided in our bill report. Certainly happy to answer any questions that committee members might have. Currently, Montgomery County, Baltimore County, PG County, Gaithersburg, and Antirondo County are currently having zoning, either hearing examiner hearings or their equivalent of the Board of Zoning Appeals hearings using virtual platforms. So, we're not asking for anything other than what many other jurisdictions are currently doing. And as Mr. Tiso had mentioned earlier, this particular language in the zoning code only impacts BMZA. So, we're simply asking for the ability or the reinforcement of the ability to have something like virtual hearings moving forward. Happy to answer any questions that committee members might have.
Real quick, someone who's on the line, I presume, has a baby. Their noise machine for their baby is singing a baby carol. If you could please mute. Thank you. Derek, just for clarification, in your bill report, it says why Section 3 should be removed from the bill. This is referring to the same amendment that Eric Tiso referred to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. So, we're just talking about one amendment? Correct?
That's correct.
And Eric, can you just... I know the answer, but can you just confirm for everyone listening?
Yes, sir, we concur.
Okay. And do we have the language for that amendment?
Mr. Chairman, it's simply removing Section 3. So, Section 3 of the bill provides a sunset clause. So, if the amendment were to remove Section 3, the bill would read as removing two particular sections of the zoning code.
I got it, yeah. Page 2, lines 9 through 12. That's what I was looking for. So, Matt, can you note that that's going to be an amendment the committee is going to entertain on page 2, striking lines 9 through 12 in their entirety, please?
Mr. Chair, if I could just offer a clarification. The first sentence of Section 3 actually provides when the ordinance takes effect. And that is when it's enacted.
It's that last sentence?
Yes.
Okay, understood. So, yeah, we're talking about just removing that last sentence in lines 10 through 12 of page 2. Got it. Okay, very helpful. Thank you, Matt. Before we get into public testimony, Vice Chair Clark, you're up first.
My question is, I didn't realize till today. And somehow, I don't have a copy of the bill in front of me, but I know what it says. I've been through it. So, this is really not coming from the zoning board or the administration. It's coming from because there's a constituent issue going on, and then brought us all together on this.
Derek, can you start back?
I'm asking, yeah, Mr. Baumgartner.
Yeah, I'd like to start with Derek, and then if Councilman Schleifer would add anything that can add to the...
I'm just, actually, I just... Because I have a question after that.
Sure. So, this particular bill was actually in a collection of bills pre-COVID-19. And then, when the quarantine hit, it exacerbated issues like the constituent that Councilman Schleifer had mentioned earlier. So, it was something that was in the... About to get in the hopper anyway. And then, there was a particular constituent issue that brought it to the fore. If that answers your question, Councilwoman.
Yeah, it does, exactly. And then, my comment is this. I've been through... You're familiar with the problem I already faced when I had the chum community scheduled to come in about a zoning case. Now, they couldn't get it postponed. This was going to be a virtual hearing. And the problem is, if you look at the map that one of our community people, I think it was a community person, sent in, you can see the parts of the city that have internet connections and the parts that less and less have them. And that began something in my district about not so much talking about the current emergency, but the long-term idea of amending out any termination date for virtual capacity and authorization. So, what happens is... What happens is, a lot of people that can't get down there or that they can't get down there because the city hall is closed, it's all up to being virtual. And it's a difficulty for some neighborhoods more than others. Now, I'm a member of a city council that's doing this right this minute. And I acknowledge that. And even though I can never find the right button, it works. And we are in a problem right now. But I just have to explain that notion of an amendment to make this permanent is of great concern to me, especially around the zoning board because of how many people really show up personally on so many issues and how many of those neighborhoods really don't have the kind of access we have right here today. So, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't exactly coming from the zoning board, although I understand that it would have eventually. Rather, we had a pandemic or not. So, I just want to say, it's one thing for me to be against what I'm doing myself as a member of the council. But to do it, to have the capacity to do it... from here on, is something I would find very, very problematic after this emergency is over because I feel like a member of the council that we have, that we will go back as fast as we can to personal hearings and meetings. That's basically, I'm sure, will happen. But I'm not so sure with the zoning board, nothing against the zoning board, but it's such a populated place so many times with people that otherwise wouldn't be able to participate. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Clark. Colleagues, are there any other questions for the agencies?
Mr. Chairman, again, this is Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office. Before we move off of agency testimony, may I be recognized?
Of course. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I did just want to speak a little bit to something I think is on point to what Councilwoman Clark was just saying. As Mr. Baumgartner pointed out, this is a piece of legislation that's sort of been under consideration for a while. And because of the emergency situation we found ourselves in, the timetable to introduce it was, was accelerated. We wanted to make sure that the BMZA was totally in the clear, operating virtually and continuing the, the business of the city. And the reason that the, that the administration did request the sunset provision be added to the bill was to, you know, again, to make sure that, that everybody was able to get to work, you know, without any sort of legal issues as quickly as possible, but that we did have an opportunity to, you know, look at how we wanted to address this issue on a permanent basis. Up to and including just, you know, continuing to eliminate those requirements entirely on a permanent basis, but that there was some opportunity to look at it more thoughtfully and, and, you know, make sure that we were, you know, making sure that we had a process that allowed the, allows the agency to to conduct the hearings that they need to have, but also allow for meaningful public participation. And I respect, I know the, the mayor remembered from his time as Council President, and I'm sure Councilwoman Clark does as well. Again, there is a legislative history from back, I believe, in 2011. But it might have been earlier than that, when, when these in-person requirements were put into the zoning code. And I just want to make sure that we're, you know, being thoughtful about, about changes. So that was the intention behind the sunset, but obviously, you know, the, this committee will consider the amendments that have been offered and yeah, we'll see what the, what the will of the committee is. But I did want to add that for context. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clark?
I just, I just wanted to say that, I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure I understood the, whether the Mr. Stegman is saying that the administration supports or does not support the amendment. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about this going forward beyond when the rest of us all go back to the way we should operate, which is with people in the middle of the discussions, whether it's Board of Estimates, or whether it's the City Council and other parts of government. But zoning board probably gets more people per meeting showing up about issues than any of the rest of us do. And I think it's important if we're going to not, if, if we terminate this in sync with what the rest of us in city government are doing, that's one thing. If this is forever in that environment, you know, technologically unbalanced city, then that's different. That's really different for me. It makes all the difference. And I think that if we're going to permanently do that, we, we need a more outreach about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Colleagues, any other questions for the agencies? Matt, let's start a public testimony, please. For the, oh, hang on one second. Councilman Risinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Could you be good? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I did, it's just a comment real quick that the Planning Commission, which I sit on, I came up with this amendment and we supported it and voted on it to give BMZ a flexibility to have virtual hearings. If you do a sunset for August, and we go into the fall, and we have an issue again with this, with, with the pandemic, then we got to come back again because of virtual hearings, if you put a sunset date on it. And so I think it's, Planning Commission has hearings where we're like four or five hours. And it's been working with the virtual hearings. And I think it's a new day, and I just want to say that I support this, and I think we should support the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of brief comments.
Um, Matt, can you open it up for public testimony?
Mr. Chairman, well, Mr. Baumgartner has something he'd like to say.
Derek?
Just very briefly, the I certainly understand the concerns. One thing I would express to committee members is number one, just like this platform that we're using right now, you don't need a computer, right? So there's a call-in number. We also like always accept written testimony ahead of time. And the board has also imposed a new rule which allows the board to essentially call back an approval or disapproval 10 days after a hearing if folks had trouble either logging on or calling in or providing testimony. So the intent of the bill is certainly not to take away anyone's ability to participate. And the Planning Commission has actually seen an increase in participation. That's the first thing. The second thing, when, when this language was added in 2011, BMZA was the only agency impacted. So the rule did not change anything for the Planning Commission or CHAP or for City Council. And I would ask the committee to place yourselves in the shoes of BMZA, where you are all required ostensibly to be in the same room all at the same time. You can't leave for deliberations. You can't leave for discussion. You're required to be in the same room. So it, it puts restrictions on BMZA that no other city agency, including this council, are currently under. So by removing that, it's not placing BMZA in any other position other than every other city, every other city agency is currently under. It doesn't change open meetings act requirements. It doesn't change other legal obligations that were required to employ at all times. So I hope that goes a little bit towards Councilwoman Clark's concerns regarding the bill. And as, as Councilmember Risinger just testified to, the Planning Commission had a very good discussion about the bill. And specifically the sunset. And BMZA agrees that if a sunset's placed and there is a new outbreak of COVID-19, we'll have to come back to this council and go back through the bill process in order to reinforce again what we already think that we're legally doing right now. There are other reasons why this bill was being planned before the COVID-19 state of emergency, including when cases go up on appeal to the courts and then are remanded back sometimes years later. So there are other ancillary reasons to remove this language from the bill. The COVID-19 situation just brings that to the fore. So I'm certainly able to answer any questions that other council members have, including the legislative history of the 2011 bill which added the language. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's good. Thank you, Derek. Uh, Matt, let's open up for public testimony.
I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, Matt Stegman again, may, may I offer?
Please keep it brief, please keep it brief.
No, extremely.
Start at 2:30, so.
Yeah, extremely brief. I just want to, you know, reiterate, I mean, it is important that this bill be passed swiftly, because we do want to make sure that there's, that, you know, the BMZA is operating, you know, fully above board. It is, it is an important clarification. Again, the intent behind the sunset was to let the, you know, give the, the mayor and the council an opportunity to you know, have a, a longer, more thoughtful discussion while moving quickly. But if it's the, the pleasure of the committee and of the council that, you know, that they do decide that this is the best way to move forward, you know, that, that is fine. You know, we just wanted to make clear it, it is important that we, that we get this bill passed and we do get this clarification. So I appreciate your time. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Understood and agreed, Matt. Thank you. Matt Peters, let's open it up for public testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't have any hands raised from computer users. I'll just remind everyone from public, if you do wish to testify and you're joined by a computer, please use the raise hand function to let us know that. And we have one.
Matt, one, one quick, two quick things. One, there were a number of letters of opposition and or support that came in for this bill. Those were emailed to all of the members of the committee. So colleagues, you should have those in your inboxes. And Matt, we're going to do a three-minute time limit for public testimony for each caller.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We only have one caller other than Councilman Bullock, and I'm unmuting them now.
Thank you.
Not seem like there's a response. Right, Mr. Chair, I think that is all of the public testimony.
Thank you, Matt. Colleagues, you know, we have here that I believe is going to put BMZA in the same position that our other boards are in, whether it's liquor or CHAP or Planning Commission. So this is obviously critically important in light of what has transpired with the new world that we live in post-COVID-19. There are amendments that have been proposed, and I think that everyone is of the same mindset that hearings indefinitely. But Councilman Risinger brought up a very good point that we could very well have another outbreak of COVID-19 in the fall or in the winter. Avoid being in a position where we have to slow government down in order to go through another procedural set of steps. BMZA to do virtual hearings to keep government moving. So this, these amendment makes a lot of sense to me. The amendment is to remove the last sentence with the sunset clause. These two lines 10 through 12. So Councilman Risinger, I want to thank you for your insightful comments related to that. Is there a motion to move that amendment?
Move.
By Councilman Risinger. Is there a second to that amendment? I see a second from Councilman Stokes. We're going to do a roll call on that amendment. Yes, Clark?
Not surprisingly, I'm voting no on this amendment. We, we regularly in the council with legislation such as we just approved on rentals relief. Date that is X amount of days after the emergency is lifted. Gives us plenty of moving room. And we could do the same here. So if COVID-19 crops back up, or if it ever goes away to have a crop back up, that's the protection we use regularly now in legislation. It could be done here. So that it's not a date certain, but it's a date after the emergency is lifted. So we could do it. But we're choosing not to do it. And I've got constituents in more than one neighborhood who are going to be extremely upset about this. And for the reasons I've tried to articulate here today. Because I can't vote for the whole bill if it has this amendment in it that never lets it go away. So, no.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Bullock?
Yeah.
Bullock is a yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Risinger?
Yes.
Sneed?
No.
Stokes? Stokes?
Sorry. Yes.
This amendment passes five to two. Colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended? I see a motion from Risinger. Is there a second? I see a second. Roll call. Costello, yes. Clark?
No.
Bullock?
Yeah.
Pinkett?
Yes.
Risinger?
Yes.
Sneed?
No.
Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes five to, moves to second reader on Monday, May 18th at 5:00 PM. We are now in recess. We jump off the call, colleagues. We do have a Budget and Appropriations Committee hearing. So we're going to switch over to a different WebEx on this. Matt, thank you for the job running the hearings. Derek, Eric Tiso, Matt Stegman, thank you for joining us today. We appreciate it. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.